Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Hensley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, teach us all to be generous and teach this council to serve our neighbors as they deserve. To give and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heed the wounds, to toil and not to seek for rest, to labor and not to ask for reward. Except to know that we are representing all of the residents of Jefferson City capably, honestly, and honorably. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll now call to order the Monday, December 2nd, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Praether.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I always start in the beginning to see if we have any scouts in the audience. I don't see any this evening, but I also want to recognize that we have a former councilman, Mr. Ron Medine, in the audience, and also former mayor, John Lanware, is here tonight. It's great to have you both here this evening. Thank you. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Item A, presentation of the 2019 Kevin Minehart Award to Katie Lacy. We welcome Gail Stroke to the podium. And Katie is here as well. Welcome. And congratulations.
Thank you. I am very pleased this evening to be able to present the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. With me this evening is Bob Minehart. This is Kevin's brother. Kevin served on the Jefferson City Board of Adjustment from 1997 to 2012. And during Kevin's lifetime, he demonstrated commitment to public service and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. The employees of the City of Jefferson City, the mayor and the city council at the time, expressed their gratitude for the example Mr. Minehart set, and thus the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was born. So nominations for this award can be submitted by any member serving on a city board, commission, or committee, as well as any staff liaison or city council member. The candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence, and professionalism, outstanding enthusiasm, and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct. I'm very pleased this evening to introduce this year's recipient, Ms. Katie Lacy. Katie has selflessly served the Board of Adjustment for five years as an alternate and is now serving her first full term as a regular member. She is also an active member on the Cultural Arts Commission where she has served since March of 2016. I'd like to read some of the comments that were included on her nomination form. Katie is a consistent attendee on these boards and commissions. She often asks good questions, offers valuable feedback and input, and treats citizens coming before the board or commission with respect and values what they are saying. Katie is one of our passionate citizens who gives back so much to our community through her service, often flying under the radar. The time commitment for the board or commission that she serves on is more than just the in-person meetings with required reading and review of materials. She provides citizens with fair and respectful review of their requests with the Board of Adjustment, taking their perspective into consideration before making a decision. On the Cultural Arts Commission, she ensures the city funds are wisely and appropriately allocated for activities that support the mission and purpose of the commission. Whether serving as chair of a city board, commission, or as a board member, she always brings a positive professional approach and demeanor to the proceedings of the board or commission on which she is serving. Her citizenship is reflected through her service on these city boards and commissions, participation in the community organizations, interactions, and commitment to the positive promotion of the City of Jefferson. It's because of these reasons and many others that I'm very pleased this evening to be able to present Ms. Katie Lacy as the recipient of the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service for the year 2019.
Would you like to say anything?
No, just to express our appreciation for the city's commitment to this award. Kevin will be proud.
And thank you. It's so nice to meet you. And I do want to say, I've served with Kevin for a while on the board, so this is a real honor to get this. And I just want to say thank you to the council and city staff that supports all the boards and commissions, and all the citizens that serve on the boards and commissions. They all do a great job. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Bob, this is such a wonderful way to honor and remember Kevin for his service to our community, and our city is so fortunate to have you, Katie, serving in these capacities that you are. And our city wouldn't be what it is without all of the wonderful volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions. So, we appreciate you going above and beyond, and we appreciate the Minehart family for always doing this award every year. It's very special to us because our citizen boards and commissions are extremely important to our future. So, thank you all and congratulations. And we would love to get a picture of all of you up here with council. I don't know if you had anything to add this evening, but... Yes, she is great. Absolutely. Well, thank you again and congratulations. And item B, we get to recognize fire driver Dale Demo retiring with 30 years of service. We have Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. We're excited tonight to recognize fire driver Dale Demo after 30 years of service. He was hired November 19th, 1989, promoted to fire driver February of 1997, and will retire this Friday, December 6th, after just over 30 years of service. And just to put that into perspective, I looked up November 19th, 1989 today, and the number-one song on the charts that week was Milli Vanilli "Blame It on the Rain." So, I don't know if you liked that song or not, but that was your first day on the job. So, we recognize just the long tenure of service that that is, and that represents... I know Dale is here tonight with his wife, Carrie. Is there anybody else you'd like to introduce, family-wise?
No.
Okay. I'll hand it to the Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Dale. We appreciate your 30 years of service to the City of Jefferson. And being in the fire department, we know that you really put others above yourself many times, and you go above and beyond, and it really means a lot that you've done that job. I know it's certainly not an easy one. I was fortunate enough to have an opportunity to ride on a call before, and just, I know the amount of skill that it takes, and sometimes being able to be calm among the pressure and things like that are something that not everybody can do, and you've done it well, and you've done it for 30 years. And so, on behalf of the city, we're thankful for your outstanding service, and we congratulate you in your retirement, wish you the best. And we also would like to present to you tonight a key to the city. So, and I'll open it up to council if they have anything to add this evening. I know they will second me in congratulating you.
Thanking you, yeah.
And thanking you, yes, for all your outstanding service. And I know you said you have your wife, Carrie, with you this evening, and also a room full of firefighters that are here to support as well, which is wonderful to have your firefighter family here this evening as well. So, would you like to say anything?
Uh, just want to say thank you.
You can come to the mic there.
Yes, thank you for the city to give me the opportunity to work for the city. It's been a great adventure and a great place to work.
Well, we've been very fortunate to have you, and congratulations again. And I'll come forward and present you with this key to the city. And then after that, we could get a photo with all of the firefighters in the room as well. We'll get one here first.
We got another one. Okay, one, two, three. Okay.
I think we're all going to have that song in our head the rest of the night. Okay. Appreciate his service. Item five, public hearings. Item A, we have Bill 2018-68.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code, to establish short-term rental of a residence and short-term rental of a lodging room as a permitted use in the residential and industrial zoning districts.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this bill deals with short-term rental uses. Short-term rentals are land uses wherein an existing residential dwelling unit is being rented out on a nightly basis, or where perhaps a portion of a residential dwelling unit, such as a bedroom or separated space, is being rented out on a nightly basis. Currently, short-term rentals are classified within the zoning code as special exception uses within the residential zoning districts, and also the industrial districts, meaning that anyone who's wanting to pursue a short-term rental use at their house or on their property are required to obtain a special exception permit, which includes a planning and zoning commission public hearing, and then also a city council public hearing with the ultimate decision resting with the city council. This bill would reclassify short-term rentals as from that special exception category to a permitted use, meaning that property owners would no longer be required to go through that special exception planning zoning city council process. Their proposals would be reviewed administratively by city staff. There are a number of what are called special, specific use standards that are contained within the zoning codes, special rules that pertain to short-term rentals that address a lot of the concerns that people have expressed at many of the public hearings on these matters, ranging from parking, how many guests can stay in a short-term rental, and dealing with some administrative things such as requiring business licensing, lodging taxes be paid, and proper inspections being made. This matter was originally brought forward before the Administration Committee at their August meeting, where the general point of discussion was that it's a fairly cumbersome lengthy and expensive process for a property owner or homeowner to pursue a short-term rental use, going through, not only paying the application fees, but also going through what is in effect a three-month legislative process. It was identified at that meeting that's really a planning and zoning matter, and so city staff brought the matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a discussion item at their September 12th meeting, where the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this topic and instructed staff to bring forward a proposal to reclassify these as permitted uses, which is what this bill addresses. And then at the October 10th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their formal public hearing and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of this proposed zoning code amendment to the city council. It is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. There was a public hearing at the last council meeting as well, where no one spoke at that public hearing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. So, just to make sure, in the existing ordinance, there are seven specific provisions under 35B, and this is just removing the first special provision requiring the special exception use permit, right? The other specific provisions that sort of currently govern the offering of these will still be in place, correct?
Correct, yes. We felt it proper to remove that item one that dealt with special exception use permit because it would no longer be any of these that fall into that category. But the major effect is, within the land use matrix, which is shown up on the screen, reclassifying from special exception to permitted.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Are there any provisions to allow certain neighborhoods to opt out? In other words, in a sense, a certain neighborhood chooses not to allow for short-term rentals within their specific neighborhood. Is there an opportunity for a neighborhood to choose that as an exemption to the permitting?
I mean, there's various options for a neighborhood to pursue private covenants, but within city processes, no, this would be applicable to the entire city.
The second question is, are there limits to the number of attempts they can make to get in a permit? I mean, they'll be asking for administrative review, right?
Yeah, it's administrative review.
They can do that over and over and over again, I assume, until they get a permit.
I probably defer if there's any... I don't, I'm not aware of any restrictions on number of attempts, but it really becomes a business licensing question at that point.
Yeah, so this is, it's not even an administrative review. It's a permitted use, and so essentially, staff would be looking at whether or not the proposed use fulfills objective criteria, and if they fulfill the objective criteria, then they get their permit. So, it's a non-discretionary decision, and you see this quite a bit where, you know, people come in for, you know, to get a business license or some sort of permitted permit, and then staff says, okay, we need these five things still in addition. And they can come back as many times as they want to until they fulfill all the requirements. And then once those requirements are fulfilled, then staff is compelled to issue, you know, in this case, it would be a business license. So, there's no limit on the amount of times someone could approach the staff and say, okay, do I have all my requirements now?
Any other questions before we open the hearing? Councilman Graham?
A couple of questions. Well, first of all, thank you all for not taking this up until I returned back from vacation. Thank you so very much. I guess, I have received a couple of phone calls in opposition to this change, and so I know you had stated earlier that it's pretty much upon the staff's recommendation. So, what is the appeal process if staff says no to allowing someone to have this short-term rental? Is there an appeals process?
Yeah, so if, like, once again, this is a, this would be a non-discretionary type of thing. And so, if someone's, you know, there's six criteria that a short-term rental would have to comply with, if someone feels that they have met all six criteria and staff says, no, you haven't, then they could go to the Board of Adjustment either for an appeal or for a variance. So, it would be the same as any other type of land use decision where the Board of Adjustment is the appeals process.
And so, but the Board of Adjustment is final decision. So, Board of Adjustment, that means that's it, correct?
Yes, but it is different than what the process we currently have. So, Board of Adjustment currently has, or sorry, it's not the Board of Adjustment, it's the city council. So, currently, there is a, it's a discretionary decision as to whether or not to issue a special exception permit for the short-term rental. This would change that so that it's no longer discretionary. If they meet all the criteria, they automatically get the permit. And so, there is no real decision to be made, other than, do they fit these six objective criteria? And so, at the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment is not looking at, you know, is this a good fit for the neighborhood or something like that? They're making the determination of, okay, can we waive the requirement that you fulfill with the fire code? Or, you know, waive the requirement that, you know, I'm not sure of the details, but, you know, waive the requirement that you, you know, can't have more than four people occupying a bedroom or something like that, you know? So, it's, the decisions that are being made are kind of, whether or not the objective criteria is met, not the more discretionary criteria that is currently the subject of the issuance of this type of permit.
But these no longer go through P and Z anymore?
They would not go through P and Z. It would be Board of Adjustment, and that is the end.
So, why do we, why does staff think that it was better to remove it from the current process that we have, that was on a case-by-case basis, in order than just open it up for the entire city? What gave us to, what made us really say, let's just remove this process, let's remove this step, and just open it up for the entire city?
I think you have to direct that to PPS staff.
Whoever, staff.
Yeah. And so, that was the item of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. The answer is that it is a very burdensome process for someone to pursue. That was one item. A special exception permit is, you know, is a, well, it's a complicated series of steps for someone that's wanting to do something like this. It is not typical for most other businesses across the community. And it involves a fairly large application fee, currently $500. That application fee is directly related to the costs that the city incurs in order to publicize, to publish public notices of these public hearings in the newspaper, to process these things in front of the two boards, you know, the two boards, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, and then also to produce the various staff reports, recommendations, do the analysis associated with this. You know, again, something that is not common for businesses of this scale. Special exceptions are typically very large potentially, or, you know, land uses that have a very high potential for negative effects on surrounding property. I'll use some examples such as big-box retail uses, landfills, junkyards. And so, a short-term rental use, you know, so staff have looked at this and discussed it internally very heavily, and a lot of the conclusions that staff have come to is that they have a fairly low level of impact on residential areas, that there are many other permitted uses of residential areas that have a potential higher level of impact than a short-term residential use. I'll give the example of a daycare. Currently, in-home daycare for up to 10 children is a permitted use within single-family residential zoning districts. And so, the, you know, the traffic is usually the largest impact associated with, you know, business or commercial-type uses. And so, an in-home daycare of 10 children would be expected to have much more traffic than a short-term rental of just a single unit, involving basically one car trip. And I hope that answers your question to some extent. It was basically seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission as a fairly burdensome type of procedure for someone to go through that was not resulting in a lot of real benefit in terms of reviewing impact on surrounding properties, that many of the special, or many of the specific use standards that are already contained within the code, and they would still have to adhere to, address most of the concerns from surrounding residences that have been expressed during public meetings.
Councilman Wiseman?
Councilman Graham, this was actually initiated by me. I'm the one who talked to Mr. Barron about getting this changed, and so that's how this was initiated. And so, we did discuss that, but that's the, that's the short end of that, is I'm the one who saw that there was a lot of, and I think some other council members were too, there was a lot of contention during these meetings, and we were still approving them, and approving these, and the Planning and Zoning was approving them. And I talked to some of the members of Planning and Zoning, and so I started inquiring about that. And so, it wasn't just staff initiated, and so I don't want to place that burden on them entirely. That wasn't entirely just them making up something. That's something I inquired about. So, I don't want to place the burden here on staff.
Councilman Hensley, did you have something? Okay. Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just going to follow up with that. And that was the conundrum we had. We had folks standing in front of us that had checked every box, complied with what we asked them to do. This seemed like a much better process for everybody involved. If we're going to have it in our city, we ought to do it right, and this gives people, if they comply with what we say we want from them, then they ought to be approved. And, you know, I commend staff for putting together a plan that I think will work for everybody. I would just ask one question. We've got a number of these in place. Have we had any complaints or any problems with any of them?
I have not received any complaints on any of them.
So, it's working the way that folks want it to work, and again, I commend them for working with us. I mean, I think we tried something that was very cumbersome, and I think this will be a benefit to all involved.
Councilman Graham?
Thank you for those comments. Certainly, it may be working okay now, but when it opens up into the entire city, then how is it really going to work? And then my other question is, what happens to the one property which we denied? What happens to that home? Does it come back in and get put into where it can be a part of it now? And we voted no? The one off of Cedar Ridge, I believe it is?
Yeah, and that is correct.
That's not right.
I'm sorry.
Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and would ask if anybody would like to come forward and speak on Bill 2018-68. You do not have to be signed up in advance. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the bill? Welcome. If you could just give us your name for the record, please.
I'm Judy Bryant, 2059 Hastings Road, Jefferson City. I'm the survivor of the last... process of an Airbnb. We went through the whole process. It was hard, but we survived it. I don't really have an opinion, since we're already approved, whether it goes through or not. It's totally up to you. But someone asked me after the last hearing if I just maybe give some facts of how ours has been, since we were approved on March 18th. By the end of April, we were in business, went through all the inspections, all the criteria was met. Everybody thought we would have parties. We've had no parties. We've had nobody asking to have a party. We've had not, didn't have to shut down any parties. We've always only had one car there. Maybe in three or four instances, when the spouse was there, and then his wife was meeting him later, they were moving here or something, we might have had two cars. But beyond that, we've only ever had one car. I don't know if you've gotten any complaints. If, if you did, they're not warranted, because we haven't done, we're, we're always there. Nothing has gone wrong. To give you some facts of what we've had, since the end of April, we've had it rented 165 nights. That's way more than I even anticipated. We had, as you recall, I might, may or may not recall, my husband works at Quaker Windows, and we had, we had one person from Tennessee, was there for 10 days. One came for six weeks from Texas. They both took the jobs and purchased homes, pricey homes, in Jeff City after they stayed. I don't know if you know that a lot of the healthcare is traveling now. We've had a traveling nurse there, 11 different nights. We've had, currently have a traveling ultrasound tech there for 10 nights. She had rented a place downtown for a month, and it was too noisy. She couldn't sleep. She gets called in at all hours. She couldn't sleep. So, she found us. And I, we're busy, so I can't take her for the, they're usually here for 13 weeks. I can't take her the whole time, but we've got her for 10 days when we had openings. We had a traveling respiratory therapist for 12 nights. She came from Texas and stayed. We've had a family who their son goes to college in Lynn. They've been there four, four different times with us. Keep coming back. They've been there for a total of seven nights. We have a parent, some parents from Florida, Pastor Vega and his wife. Their son plays for Lincoln University. They've been there twice. They've stayed for five nights. We had a couple, just before Thanksgiving came for the second time. They travel here from Ohio. Every couple months, they come. They do a prison ministry. Last time, when they came before Thanksgiving, they brought 96 loaves of bread to give to the families of the prison. I don't know. It goes on and on. I, I mean, I, maybe you have questions for me as to how it has worked out. It's the best job I've ever had, and I've made a lot more money than this, but I certainly have not enjoyed any job any more than this.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Welcome. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Carla Kessel. I live at 921 Fairmont Boulevard. I spoke at the Planning and Zoning, and probably most of you have read my notes from that. But we, we want to open an Airbnb. And so, for us, this is in our neighborhood. We live in the historic East Side. So, for us, these are neighbors. The people that are staying in the Airbnbs, so there's more of a drive to keep the house looking great, keep it clean, keep it up for the neighbors that are surrounding the area. We have a rental across the street from our own home. So, there, it's a year-long rental. Those people still have their Halloween decorations up. There's nothing we can do about that. But in Airbnb, you're constantly cleaning it. You're constantly putting the maintenance into it. It allows people, when they come into our area, to live locally and see all the great things about Jefferson City. Columbia has 400 Airbnbs, and we have eight. So, we're losing a lot of the funding to Columbia, because the different, different houses and different sizes. Judy's would be a different size than ours. Ours is big enough for a family with pets, multiple bedrooms. But also, when our family comes in, they stay in Columbia, because there's lots of selection up there. So, then we eat in Columbia restaurants. We shop in Columbia instead of keeping all of the money here. As far as the traveling, so if you're traveling for work, so let's say it's a nurse with a contract for 13 weeks, do you want to stay in a hotel for 13 weeks? I mean, it's, it's kind of miserable, right? It's one room. You don't have a washer and dryer. You don't have your own space. Most Airbnbs have a washer and dryer. They have full kitchens, so people can cook and feel like they're still at home. My son is a travel welder. He's on the road now traveling, and he wants to stay in something that feels like home, so he can wash his clothes on his seven, 12-hour shifts. He can cook food at home. And then also, when he travels, because he's 18, a lot of the hotels don't allow people under 21 to rent a hotel room. So, he's now discovered the world of Airbnbs, and he's staying in like these grandmother's basements and having a great time doing that. For those people that are opposed to the Airbnbs or have concerns, Airbnb encourages trust and responsibility. So, the website states that they conduct background checks in the U.S. on both the host and the guest. As Airbnb host, we're rated by our guests, and the guests are rated as well by our reviews. We must approve every guest that's, that comes to stay at our property. We wouldn't allow any guests with any bad reviews to stay at our property. Airbnb has a direct link for any concerns by the neighbors, and they're also, at this moment, setting up a hotline for concerned neighbors. So, we would make sure everyone in our neighborhood, which is us and our neighbors around us, have the hotline. So, if we didn't notice something happening at the Airbnb, they could call in directly, and Airbnb would handle it right away. So, over the world, 2 million people per night stay in Airbnbs. We just stayed in one in another country, had an issue actually with the host, and Airbnb stepped in and corrected it immediately within 24 hours. And then, you know, we talked about having a kitchen, washer and dryer, a home space. People traveling with little ones, hotels are difficult. If you have little ones that like to get up at 5:00 a.m., jump up and down, you have people below you, people above you. So, when you're in, you're in home, you can have your pack and place, the cribs, all the things, all of your pets and animals, you know, different options like that, that hotels just don't allow. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Weisman?
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell us why you haven't gone through the current process?
We just purchased the house in October. And it needed, it needed to be renovated, so we just finished a massive renovation on the house.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 201868? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 201868. Is there any council discussion or deliberation on the bill? Councilman Mahalovich?
I recognize the benefits of the Airbnb. I'm not specifically opposed to the Airbnb, but, you know, perception as it was, I, especially in the Hastings case, I was compelled by the testimony given by the landowner that they were going to take good care of their property. They weren't always going to be there. I don't, I thought at one time there was not going to be an alcohol item, it seems like. And so, but anyway, you have very tightly controlled, and, and I don't know if that applies to all Airbnbs and how that would work, our short-term rentals. One point of, of clarification, will, will it, you know, be permitted, so just go right to the Board of Adjustment? Is that correct?
No, it would not go to the Board of Adjustment. What Ryan was referring to is an appeal process. If there, and, and that is true for any appeal on a land use decision, that the Board of Adjustment acts as the appeal body. No, it would be reviewed at the staff level, and if it meets the qualifications, or, you know, the specific use standards and, and any other requirements regarding business licensing, et cetera, it would be approved.
Okay. The perception was that, even though it was described as having low impact, and I understand the daycares and the rentals and, and all those other things that go with, with that, that this was considered low impact. But the perception amongst residents in Hastings, I didn't quite understand, given your tight control of that. And then, I didn't understand some of the reaction we got from other neighbors, but it was their perception, and it's oftentimes in marketing, perception is fact. And so, it did impact them, and impact them, they thought, in adverse ways. That, that being said, my only issue is, is, is ensuring that we maintain the, the kind of level of, of scrutiny that the Airbnbs seem to have, have, have applied to the short-term rentals. I mean, to understand that there is sort of an internal review process is very good. I'm just a little bit hesitant to, to, to give up the protections that people think they have in their own commu, own neighborhoods right now, because all of a sudden, there's going to be a huge change. And the first couple of these that go through without council looking at it, we're going to get those people coming to us. So, I think it's a big change. I think one thing that cities do is protect people's property. We're not the Wild West. And, and I feel like we're losing a protection of property. And for that reason, I don't, I don't disagree with the efforts and, and the good news we have, but I sort of would like a, a different process for, for how we approve those. Not so burdened, burdensome, but to now, it just seems like checkmarks. And currently, I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting some of the same calls that Councilman Graham is, and, and I understand their concerns. So, for me, I think we're making a big leap here. That's all.
Councilman Prather?
You know, something that Councilman Mahalovich said, currently, we have a process in which we take the neighbors into account. The council can vote up or down based off weighing on whether or not the neighborhood likes it. If we change it to this process, the new process, or to take that process away, and just lets the staff decide, that's not taken into account anymore, is it?
Actually, the staff is just determining whether they meet the special specifications. And the business license process, there are requirements for them to go through, too. And there are inspections that city staff goes out and makes sure that these, these issues are there. But there, there is no recourse for the neighbors.
Right. You, you don't really take their consideration into account?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Kemna?
And I got a question. We, we said we have eight currently, right now, in Jefferson City?
I believe it's nine.
Nine?
Oh, excuse me. Nine applications and eight have been approved by the City Council.
And chief, have we, have we had any issues from the police force with any of these that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of that. Of course, I don't have direct access, sitting here, to the addresses, to know that. We could determine that, but not tonight.
Councilman?
I mean, I can understand some of the concerns that you guys might have. I think, I think the one that got denied by the council, I'm not going to speak for other council people, but I think, like, I was all for it. I think it checked all the boxes. I just don't think that the applicant was here that night to present it. So, I think that was one of the main reasons. I don't want to, you know, assume. But I don't, I don't have an issue with this, with this process. I know you guys have rental property, correct? And the neighbors don't have any say on who rents the properties. So, I don't, I don't know. I just feel like we're policing it a little bit too much.
Councilman Hesse?
Just for clarity, because we brought up the in-home daycare example. So, I can make the decision to start an in-home daycare in my property, visit with city staff to check boxes, to gain my permit, get my business license, and I'm good to go. Correct. Okay. And so, that, I guess I would look at it and say, if somebody is staunchly opposed to the proposal before us, I would assume those same individuals would take up, want to take up processes like that and redo that process as well. Because to me, that's a more intrusive, impactful permitted use than what's before us now. Or, do we need to rethink the criteria? I go back to Councilman Fitzwater's comment earlier. If somebody's before us that's checked all these boxes, I hate to say checked boxes, it, it, it can seem to make those requirements insignificant, but has met the standards that we have established, and then are denied, it, it doesn't quite compute for me very well. I mean, I, I don't think one of the boxes or one of the standards to be met is, is neighbor approval. And so, I find that hard sometimes to put that subjective criteria on these decisions, when the process was designed to be more objective in nature. I would echo Councilman Kemna's comments, that property owner was not here to present her case that evening. I know that factored into my decision, my no vote that evening, to hear her side of the case. And so, I guess I am fine with the proposal that's before us, to establish this process. I don't, I don't foresee this becoming an issue for us. And if it does, we have the ability and authority to take action.
Councilman Mahalovich?
The other, the other thing that turned me on, the voting against the other one, was I think out of 19 houses, 17 signed petitions, that they didn't want it in their neighborhood. I think that weighed as much as the applicant not being there. So, I, I think I, I just disagree with this process, not necessarily having, having short-term rentals.
Councilman Graham?
And that's exactly what I was going to say. I think it was based on the number of people who spoke out against the approval of, of that property. And so, now you can sit here and, Councilman Hesse, and tell me that you're okay with the one that was denied, now being okay for something that this council said no to, now we're going to go back and say, "Oh, it's, it's okay now. It's been approved"?
Councilman Hesse, and then Councilman Kemna.
I, I would just counter that I described the reasonings for my vote that evening. And then, and my vote was, or, or the largest factor into my decision that evening was the absence of the property owner not here to defend her application. And therefore, to me, that sends a signal that maybe this wasn't as big of an issue to her, or something that was not as passionate for them. I can't speak to the other nine votes and what that vote would have been that evening, but I would say that, that was a big factor. And I would just add that it's, it's easy to talk about protection of property rights for the other neighbors and the individuals, but don't forget about the protection of the property rights of the individual who owns the property, who is applying for this permit and seeking to do, or, or conduct a business activity there, meeting the criteria that we have established through our process, that, that that person, that individual, that, that family, whoever that is, shouldn't get lost in this conversation about their property rights as well.
Councilman Kemna?
Yeah, and I would echo that. That was one of the main reasons why I voted against it, because she wasn't here. But I know that that's not the only case that has come before us, where the majority of the property owners in the neighborhood were against it, and we voted for it. Like, this is a case-by-case situation. I want to say, weren't the majority of the property owners against your? Yeah. So, I mean, like, you're going to have arguments on both sides. I just, I'm looking at the cumbersome nature of the, of the process. I think we're behind the times, other cities, when we, when we push forward with Airbnbs. Like I said, I think we're policing this too much. So...
Councilman Graham?
I just want to go back and ask my original question. So, based on what city staff said earlier, was that the case that came before us, that came before this body right here, and we voted no on that case. So, now, if this passes tonight, that case in which we voted no can now become a yes, and you're okay with that? That was my question.
Councilman Kemna?
Yes.
Councilman Prather?
Would we be able to exempt that one, since there's only one that we're talking about? Would we be able to exempt one, our grandfather then?
No. So, essentially, what you'd be asking is if you could grandfather them out, and that would be special legislation not allowed.
It's clear this is a bit of a divided issue, even among council members and among community members, as we've had with some of the others that have come before us. And if, as we move forward to vote, if the vote is five to five, I'll be voting no. I do believe that there is still a process for council review. However, I do think that it is somewhat of, although neighbor approval is not required, it's similar to other rezonings that we face. Every rezoning that happens, they come forward, and we have that process that it may meet all the checkboxes, and it may meet all the checkboxes at P and Z, which is more of their, their job to approve that criteria. And then, it comes to us more of, for the more objective or subjective piece. So, I think it's okay until it comes next door to your, one of your constituents. And I think some of the difference to the point about the daycare... And I think some of the difference to the point about the daycares is the overnight piece can be different, and perhaps a different person every time. But I also think that neighborhood acceptance and approval is important, and I think that some of that have come forward in the neighborhoods, they would be well accepted and received. I think there is work on behalf of that property owner to consult with the neighbors and neighborhood and gain support before it even comes to P&amp;Z and before it even comes to the council level. I simply say all of that to let you know what I'll be doing, just in case there's a tie, because I see it could be going that direction. Any other comments or deliberation before we call for a vote? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Chemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
No.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Okay. Thank you. Item six, we don't have any appointments by the mayor. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests. We have with us this evening Susan Cook-Williams and Ron Medine with Habitat for Humanity to talk about the upcoming Jackson Street Summer Build Blitz. Welcome.
Hi.
And you even have someone else special with you this evening.
Dad came to pick him up.
Oh, he's not here anymore. Okay.
He wouldn't have been that quiet if he was still here.
Otherwise, I would have been handling this by myself.
Welcome.
I thought she was talking. True.
He's my well-dressed counterpart here, though. Thank you, guys, for inviting us to come speak to you. Tomorrow, we're going to be outrolling to the public our plans for the Blitz Build, and so, we thought it was appropriate to come in front of all of you and just let you know what we were doing. It's been six months since the tornado, a little bit more than six months, and everybody in the city has been working on how to recover from the tornado. And so, we are excited to tell you guys our part in it. So, just a little background before we go into the plans. Habitat International was founded in 1976. Our affiliate was founded in 1992. Everybody knows what happened in 1993. We had the Big Flood. So, our affiliate is no stranger to what natural disasters can do to affordable housing in our town. But we build safe, decent, affordable homes for individuals and families who might not otherwise qualify. And here in Jefferson City, we have built or renovated over 113 homes. Our mission is seeking to put God's love into action. Habitat for Humanity brings people together to build homes, communities, and hope. So, people always ask me, why focus on shelter? And in Cole County, the average two-bedroom apartment costs about $6.44 a month. So, that means, according to HUD's guidelines, to where people shouldn't spend more than 30% of their gross income on housing, that a family would have to earn, an individual would have to earn $12.38 an hour, working 40 hours a week, to be able to afford that two-bedroom in our area. And I think we all know there's a lot of jobs in our town that don't make $12.38 an hour. So, on average, when we sell a home to a family, with their mortgage, taxes, and insurance, they pay about $4.50 a month. And our homeowners are your neighbors. There's a lot of misconceptions about who qualifies for a Habitat home, but we have school bus drivers, we have nurses, we have restaurant chefs, we have state employees, we have correction officers, all different kinds of people that qualify for our houses. And so, after the tornado came through our town, it just kind of ripped off that Band-Aid that was kind of holding that affordable market, housing market, together. And we definitely want to do our part, but we can't forego our regular housing program that we're already doing. We already build four to five homes a year, and so, whatever we do in relation to the tornado is going to have to be a parallel program to what we are already doing. Our current construction schedule for 2019, 2020 includes four homes. Two of those will be ADA homes, because we have handicap individuals who will be living in those homes. We have the Nichols Career Center students who are working on their one home that will be done soon in the spring, but we have those four homes that we're currently working Immediately after the tornado, within two months, we were able to place a tornado survivor family of six into a home on Ashley Street. That's a picture of them there, that Mayor Turgeon was there at that dedication. It was a wonderful day. We are also working on another home at 809 Jackson. Councilman Hesse was there, too. Sorry. I love you. Working on another home at 809 Jackson Street. We are selecting a family for that one now, and that one, we're hoping, will be done early spring. But FEMA reports that over 400 people in Cole County registered with them following the tornado. So, the two houses that we've done or doing is amazing, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So, now, I'm going to pass it to my well-dressed counterpart and let him tell you the plan.
Yes, we've been struggling, considering, trying to assemble resources, and tonight, we are recognizing, do I have to do things here? Yeah, all right, there you go, that, too. That we are announcing a Blitz Build for the summer of 2020. That will involve four additional houses, in addition to the five houses that we're already doing in 2020. The additional four houses will be built over a period of four months and will involve, hopefully, many volunteers from throughout the community, as well as the state, and maybe the nation. The first step is to begin selecting families. That will happen in January. There will be preference given to those who were impacted by the tornado, and, as you know, there were many people like that. So, we don't think there'll be any shortage of applicants for that. Our foundations for those four houses, we'll be putting in in March, and we'll actually be beginning the building, the construction, in June. To build this one, to build four additional homes, we need approximately $400,000. And we need a lot of volunteers, not traditionally, I mean, obviously, we need construction volunteers, but a Habitat project involves many volunteers other than the people that are actually wielding hammers, people to help prepare meals for out-of-state visitors, to provide housing. There are lots of things that volunteers can do. As far as the money, we have roughly a quarter of the funds already committed. Four local churches stepped up in the last two weeks, so we have about $300,000 to go. But this is a community effort. Habitat sometimes states it that we build houses. Well, it's the community that's building the houses. We provide the mechanism and the facilities for the community to come together and do that. And to emphasize the fact that this is a community effort, not just an effort by local churches, although one of Habitat's core principles is what's called the theology of the hammer. And that theology is, if you're willing to wield a hammer, we don't really care if you're a Baptist or a Methodist or anyone else. If you wield a hammer and help your fellow man, you are, you're welcome. And to signify our hope that this becomes a community effort, we have invited Mayor Turgeon to be the namesake for one of the houses. So, there will be a mayor's build as part of one of these four houses. And she is the proud face of 415 East Ashley. And we are delighted that she's accepted that offer, and we will, we're not sure what she will be doing, or if we do know, we're not telling her. And so, that's what's going on. Do we have any other questions or anything else before we move on to other things?
Mr. Kroll?
Maybe this is for Susan, but could you just give an idea of what the property owners' responsibilities are in getting into the home, some of the things that they have to do?
Yeah, I've been around Habitat for a few years, too, so I can do that real quickly. The typical homeowner spends, if it's a couple, it's 450 hours of sweat equity, which means they are on the site, helping build their homes, in some cases, helping in other functions in the organization. A single homeowner, that's 350 hours of sweat equity. So, there is a considerable amount of effort, and consider people with full-time jobs trying to find time to contribute these kind of sweat equity hours to their homes. Again, these are sold to them. They take out a mortgage at closing, and they pay these back over 20, 25 years. The benefit that comes with a Habitat home is that usually, the labor is free, because it's, the homes are built with volunteers. That allows us a little leeway in what we have to charge them, and the mortgages they get have no interest. So, that's the benefit. You're going to have to stand up and say that.
Well, do they also have to go to monthly educational classes? We call them family support classes, and those classes teach them anything and everything that we can think of that will help them become a successful homeowner. We've had the fire department, the police department, we have budgeting classes, just anything and everything that can help them be a successful homeowner. Because we're not really building homes, we're creating homeowners.
I think that's all we have to tell you tonight.
Great.
And thank you, Mayor, for your acceptance of that.
Well, I have accepted that challenge, so, you know, if you bring the mayor challenge, that we will do it. And I say "we" because I'm also going to challenge our council members. So, it won't just be the mayor's challenge, it will be mayor and council, because we work as such a great team. So, we want to do what we can to support Habitat. Are there any questions? Okay, so, we will get a picture together that we can put out there and start promoting this building blitz for Habitat.
All right.
Thank you all for coming. and to Ron, who's a former councilman, who I am on record saying he's my favorite councilman. I know that happened. So, no pressure, but he did set the bar pretty high. All right. Thank you both. And, I know, no pressure, although now that you've got the guitar out, you may have one up on Ron. I don't know. You might. No, you can beat Ron Medine, that is, that's right. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Our committee meetings are at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Does council have any reports on our committees? Any upcoming meetings to report? No? Really? There's nothing? Okay. Item B, 2020 Census update. You all have at your place a flyer, so please mark your calendar for the first meeting of the Complete Count Committee, which will be January 13 from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. And you can contact Katrina Williams or Melissa Johnson. This is a joint effort from the city and county. So, Commissioner Bushman and I are working on compiling the Complete Count Committee, and there will be, in two weeks, there's a press conference right before the next city council meeting, and it will be on that agenda. Katrina will be here to give us an update. Any questions on that at this time? Okay. And then, I will give my announcements. So, this is a busy week. We have something every night, starting with tomorrow night, I'll be in Columbia, to hear an update on the University of Missouri Business Students on how tornado affected businesses and what can be done to help businesses better prepare. So, I'm looking forward to their final report tomorrow evening in Columbia. Then Wednesday, the 4th, it is the Polar Plunge. So, if you didn't get a flyer, I have them here, and if you want to put in either bucket, so Sheriff Wheeler and I are the co-chairs, so put it in his bucket, and I'll just dump it into mine. It's fine, he won't care. It's already empty. I do have some cash in mine, just so you know. So, this is Wednesday night. It's for Special Olympics, and if you haven't done it, Rick has done it, Chief Schofield, very exhilarating to run through that freezing cold water of the hazmat sprinklers, but it's going to be like 48, so it won't be a challenge at all, right? So, and I don't know why I'm looking at Chief, because Chief's saying, "I'm not doing it this year." So, let me tell you who is, and Chief has been supporting two of your firefighters. So, we have Matt Bowden and James Noah from the local, our two firefighters. I'm looking for the police officers. I don't know if Adam signed up, but I don't see any on the list yet. There's a question mark by Adam's name. Is that a yes for Adam?
Yes.
And I expect that you may. That is a yes?
Does Adam know it yet?
Yeah, I don't know if Adam knows that, but I'm just saying, we have two firefighters, and I don't see any police officers on the list. So, you'll get us two? Thank you. So, myself, John Wheeler, Councilman Mahalovich, who hopefully will be bringing the polar bear outfit again, or whatever.
Yes, sir. Your logo there on the polar bear. For a fee.
Very small fee.
Whether your company's hat, you can feature it for a fee.
All right. Get with Councilman Mahalovich.
That could be a blue tiger by the time it's over.
Oh, I think that's a challenge right there, Carlos.
I'm a dogma, too, most likely.
And we have Barry Geip, Trish Lutz, Susan Stegman, who is sponsored by Rudy Veat, hopefully, Adam Lukinoff and other police department, in addition to Matt Bowden and James Noah, and Dave Griffith, state rep, who did say that Rudy is not actually going to go through the sprinkler, but he is paying for someone, too. So, we do have the, our state reps challenging each other there. So, there's still time, and they will accept your donations till the end of the year. But Wednesday, meet us at Madison Street. The Polar Power Hour Plunge starts at 5:00. So, you can either give or run through the sprinklers. You decide. Okay. And then Thursday night is the Mayor's Christmas Tree Lighting at Rotary Centennial Park, and we appreciate Parks and Rec. The theme is a country Christmas this year. Should be a lot of fun. Then Friday is Living Windows from 6:00 to 9:00 downtown, and Saturday is the J.C.'s Christmas Parade. Aaron, anything to announce on that?
It's going to be awesome, and it's going to be really long, and the mayor's going to be in it.
At the end with Santa?
Yeah, with Santa.
Probably the best for last. So, it's going to be a really fun week going on in Jefferson City.
What time is tree lighting ceremony?
Tree lighting is at 6:30. 5:30 is when the event starts, but the actual lighting is at 6:30. We coordinate that with Santa. So, is that right, my time? Okay. Yeah. Polar Plunge is 5:00, Mayor's Tree Lighting starts at 5:30, lighting at 6:30. Any questions, just see me, and my buckets will be up here for the rest of the night. Any other announcements? Okay. Item C, we have an MSP open house. Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. On the evening of Monday, December 9, from 5:30 until 7:30, city will be hope-stained and open house, in which the candidate developers who are seeking the opportunity to redevelop MSP, will, they've been invited to essentially show off their proposals to the public and answer questions, and hopefully, they'll have appropriate, you know, presentation boards and whatever types of information they want to give to the public. So, we are inviting the public to come to the police classroom to interact with these potential developers, and we will provide an opportunity, a means for the public to provide feedback to the MSPCP and the city council. And so, I encourage everyone that is interested in redevelopment of the MSP to come to city, sorry, to the police classroom on Monday, December 9, between 5:30 and 7:30.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, I was out of town, but I heard about the fire that took place inside of MSP. Does that have any impact on the proposals or anything like that? Or is it something totally separate of?
That shouldn't have any effect on the proposals.
Okay. I didn't know what the fire took place.
Yeah, the redevelopment is for the portion owned by the city, and the fire took place on the portion owned by the state.
Right. Okay. Thanks for clearing that up.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, Lincoln University. Carolyn is not here this evening. Is there anything? anything to report for Lincoln, Carlos? Okay. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. We have John Landware signed up this evening, Knightert Properties LLC. Welcome, Mayor Landware. And as you come to the podium, I'll say how fortunate I was to get to serve with you as a council member when you were mayor.
Thank you. I noticed that Mr. Madine is your favorite city councilman. You didn't say anything about who your favorite mayor was, and maybe we'll let that alone. I'll let Ryan chime in. I'm here representing Knightert Properties with regard to the building issues at High and Madison. And I'm here, I signed up because I saw the black checkmark, meaning, of course, that there's some suggestion that the rules may be suspended and the matter will be taken up this evening. It's also my understanding that that may not be the case. We had a good meeting with staff and yourself, mayor, this morning, and shared some pretty recent information, which I think would be very helpful for the council to have tonight if they were going to vote on this. On the other hand, and it's kind of a, it's a chicken and egg, but I don't see any reason to provide the information at this point in this forum. If the council is not going to suspend the rules, it is merely going to have the second reading tonight. However, again, if the council is disposed to vote on the matter, I'd be glad to present some information at this point. Or I'll just wait until the matter is ripe. Because I think our information is going to get to you that we provided this morning. It just probably isn't, it isn't to you right now.
Thank you, Mr. Landware. I'll defer to Councilman Hesse, who's the bill sponsor.
It is not my intention to ask for suspension of the rules, and I suspect there would be enough objections if one was made anyway. So, our intent is not to vote tonight.
Okay. In that case, I'll defer any comments to either visiting with you formally or working through staff on the information.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Landware. And any questions of council? Okay. Thank you. And that is it. So, we'll move on to item 11, consent agendas. Their motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2019-80.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Apex Incorporated in the amount of $2,413,874 for the East High Street Improvements 2020 project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is for the construction contract for the East High Street improvements. Basically, that's going to be reconstructing sidewalks, but along with that, retaining wall, storm sewers, street resurfacing, et cetera. Contracts for 2.4 million, a little over 2.4 million, $480,000 of that will come from the wastewater fund to redo the sanitary sewers in the area. So, while we have the project under construction, take advantage of that and redo some of the sanitary sewer in the area. The remainder, a little less than 1.9 or so, will come from the city-county funds, half-cent sales tax, and their road and bridge fund, split evenly by the city-county. The, so this is a much-weighted project. I know a lot of you have asked me about it over the last year and should be really hitting construction this coming spring.
Thank you. Any questions? 2019-81.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Burns and McDonnell for the purpose of designing the replacement of various lighting fixtures for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, as clerk indicated, this is a contract and engineering firm Burns and McDonnell. It's to evaluate the airfield lighting at the airport that was damaged by flooding. After that, they'll design a bid contract for us for the lighting. The project, including this fee here, would be, might be eligible for some grant funds, but we're still pursuing that. Regardless, at this point, it'll come out of the half-cent capital improvement sales tax that it's allotted for the airport matching funds.
Any questions? 2019-82.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 8 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 5, Property Maintenance Pertaining to Heat Supply.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2017, the city adopted the 2015 Building Codes, and specifically the International Property Maintenance Code, as part of Chapter 8 by reference. That particular code, like a lot of the codes, allow for regional and local changes for specific items, in this case, such as the dates when dwelling units are supposed to be provided heat at 68 degrees. And those were left blank during the adoption back in 2017. And we just want to clean it up a little bit by saying the available, heat has to be provided or available to the tenant or the person in that habitable dwelling between September 1st and June 1st. The tenant, of course, they have a thermostat and control it themselves, but basically it's just cleaning up that code so that we can ensure citizens, renters specifically, have heat available to them during the wintertime.
Thank you. Any questions? 2019-83.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving and amended and restated charter of the city of Jefferson, and submit such charter to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This bill would submit various changes to the city charter to the voters of Jefferson City at the April 7th, 2020 general election. This bill was approved by the Administration Committee. Changes included within this bill include using genderal-neutral language throughout the city charter, eliminating references to dates within the charter that are no longer effective, changing the date on which candidates' election qualifications are measured from the election date to the date of filing to facilitate compliance and enforcement of candidate qualification requirements. And then the, sorry, the Citizens Charter Advisory Review Committee recommended capitalizing city throughout the document when referring to the city of Jefferson itself. Those are changes that affect multiple provisions throughout the charter. Specific change to the charter would amend provisions relating to the office of council member and mayor. Specifically, they would add incapacity as a reason for removal under the charter. Changes to the office of mayor would specify that the mayor not hold any other city office or employment within the city. This matches the current requirement relating to council members. Another section to the office of mayor would provide for removal of the mayor, mirroring the circumstances for removal of council members, with the only exception that it would take a four-fifths majority to remove the mayor. Section 4.4 changes adds a new section, 11, which consolidates the mayor's power to remove members of citizen boards of commissions, and specifies that the mayor's authority to remove those members is for misconduct or neglected duty with the consent of council. So, that's a consolidation of provisions throughout the code in kind of one place under the mayor's powers. Sections relating to the city, changes to, relating to the office of city administrator would specify that the city administrator's entire compensation, and not just the salary, be approved by the mayor and a majority of the council, or a two-thirds majority of the council. Changes to Section 5.2 also relate to the city administrator are clarifications. I think it's the best way to consider those. Sections to the office of city councillor would change the title of that office from city councillor to city attorney. Changes regarding how time is computed within the charter are simplified. Currently, the means by which you calculate time depends on the deadline. Whether or not it's within 30 days or outside 30 days, this would simplify that so that time is calculated on a calendar day basis unless specifically, unless specifically provided otherwise. If, you know, you wanted to count on business days, or weekdays, or some other means, it would give a base of calendar days unless otherwise specifically provided. And then, changes to Section 3.5 would ensure that, it's a grandfathering clause to ensure that any member of the municipal government who currently holds office and for whatever changes in the charter would no longer qualify the whole office, that person would be grandfathered and would be allowed to continue to serve in that office until their time expires. So, it's a grandfathering clause so that no one gets kicked out of office midterm because of changes in the charter. So, those are, those are the changes to the charter that are, that are set forth in this particular ballot measure. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Graham?
And with all of that, are there more to come?
There are more to come. There were three other ballot measures that were approved by the Administration Committee. And the Administration Committee thought it best that those particular provisions be considered by themselves, not as part of any type of package. Those provisions relate to council procedures, and specifically how, how the informal calendar is handled, and also relating to bill sponsors. The next one is relating to conflicts, no, sorry, prohibitions against incompatible offices that relate to how, what offices a person who is an elected or appointed city official may also hold outside the city government. So, essentially, it would disallow elected members of the city council, the mayor, the city administrator, department director, city clerk, and then members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It would prohibit them from also holding office that is incompatible with another political subdivision.
Like school board.
Like the school board, exactly. And then, the last provision relates to residency requirements of the city administrator, the city councillor, and the, and the city clerk. But those, those three things are not included within these changes.
But there's a possibility that they may be coming before the April.
It is, it is, it is the intent of the, of the Administration Committee to put them before the council in order to get on to the April ballot, at least for consideration of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. 2019-84.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $283,000 contract with ARSI Incorporated for selective demolition of structures at 200 East High Street and 202 East High Street.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As clerk said, this would execute a contract to demolish 200 and 202 East High Street. In the summer of, last summer in 2018, the western wall of 200 High Street failed. We conducted some investigations on why it failed and what were the causes of that. And ultimately, we determined that we need to go through the process to declare the building a nuisance and go through the process to order it to be repaired or demolished. Before we can complete that task with 200, the property owner stepped forward and said, "I realize that it needs to come down," working with his insurance company and whatever other consultants he was working with. He decided that was the most practical thing for him to do. As part of that process, we determined, or we discovered that the eastern wall of 200 High Street is actually holding up 202 High Street. And there was an agreement between the property owners dating back to the 1890s that determined what would happen when 200 High Street was no longer habitable, i.e. condemned, I believe was that term. We went through the process to also declare 202 East High Street a nuisance. And we went through the process, and it was also declared to be dangerous, and it should be, it was ordered to be repaired or demolished. At that time, there was a couple lawsuits going around. I'll let Ryan discuss those in details if you have questions. But basically, it prevented us from moving forward with the demolition process. Both of these demolitions would have, it would be our normal demolition process. If we demolished it and we expended funds, the fiscal impact would be, we have a chance to recover some of those funds. So, the contract right now that we have before you would be not to exceed $300,000. Right now, the dollar amount is $283,000. The property owner of 200 has been working with the city, has a demolition permit application in. It's not complete. A week and a half ago, we sent back issues that need to be addressed, so it can be complete. Since that time, we discovered today, as Mr. Landware said, some new information has come to the city staff. I have not read it all. It's about 30 or 40 pages long. We did have a discussion this morning, and we have an idea of the content of it. We believe there's an opportunity to review that and continue working with the property owner of 200, whereas we might be able to have a more favorable contract by eliminating some items, reflecting work that he has done, or actually come up with a better solution for the, for the city side of things. So, as, as Councilman Hussey requested not to continue with suspending the rules, we would like to take that time to also continue working with Mr. Knightert, absorbing the information he's given us, and see if we can come up with a more economic and monetarily beneficial to the city solution in terms of the demolition. We've also been, I believe, Mr. Moulman had a conversation with the property owner of 202. We're still talking with them. But ultimately, the decision's going to have to be worked out between the two property owners in terms of how to deal with that wall in the middle. So, we're just introducing this now. We will have a different number and a more detailed contract come the next council meeting. We'd be glad to answer any questions. All questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Graham?
I guess I'm the only one that has a question about this. So, you're looking at a contract that's approximately $283,000. I know that we haven't had a chance to speak to Mr., was it Knightert? And, but looking at about $283,000.
Yes, sir. And that would be for both buildings. So, what we're exploring is doing one or the other, and perhaps even what order or whatnot like that. But Mr. Knightert has been moving forward with some of the preliminary work that was in that contract. So, it would not be fair to execute a contract to do work that he's already done.
Correct. Right.
And there certainly is a possibility that he may take on that whole task himself. That would save the city. But we're still talking to him to see what we can work out to hopefully avoid spending that much money on his piece of property to demolish it.
And I know that we just went through a very, 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 very tight budget, to whether we couldn't fund a lot of things in which the city certainly needed to fund. So, where do we find, or where do we get $283,000 from if we just went through this very tight, tight budget?
I could say we have about probably $10,000 not encumbered money in my demolition budget. The rest of it, I believe the finance department and Mr. Kroll would have to work with getting it out of the general fund.
You say from the general fund?
Yes, that's probably the one option. So, yeah, you're just running the general, that fund balance down further, lower.
Yeah, man. And we, and that was the big topic of concern, of us dipping below the 17% was one of the reasons why we couldn't fund like police officers and things like that, because we're going to be dipping below that 17%. So, if that's going to occur, then I'm certainly very, very concerned about where we're going to get this $283,000 from. And I also, I think I believe you said that we may recoup some of the money and not all of the money, or did I just hear that?
I cannot guarantee we'd recoup all the money. Historically, on demolitions, it depends on the value of what's left after we demolish it with the property. Certainly, we would go through the process that's permitted in city code and put a special tax bill on the property after the demolition. And Mr. Moulman's office would probably pursue some sort of legal action to consider it a personal debt and go through the court system.
So, it'd be the taxpayers, on the backs of the taxpayers, to take this building down?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kroll?
And I would just add that in this particular case, obviously, we need to recognize that the staff has gone through and done a designation of these buildings as dangerous. So, there is an urgency there for that. But you are correct. It's the use of general fund and along with everything else we have going on.
Councilman Kemna?
And it's my understanding that this is the only bid.
We have been pursuing the contract through the emergency purchase provisions due to how much time has lapsed between the first collapse of the wall and to date. And more freeze-thaws might compromise the building more, and take it down and take additional properties.
properties down in an uncontrolled sort of self-demolition, which would not be advisable. So, we have used the emergency purchasing provisions to negotiate with who we felt was one of the best contractors to be able to do this, and we have not gone out to competitive bid.
Councilman Fitzwater?
I understand the comments made by my colleague from the fourth ward, the cost and the expense. However, we're 18 months into this process roughly, and I understand, I mean, it takes time to go through the legal ramifications and what's necessary to complete a task like this. However, we are the capital city. We pride ourselves on talking about the positive things we're doing to rebuild, restructure our city. We've got legislative session starting in about five, six weeks with, hopefully, visitors coming to our town that are going to see yet this corner, I assume, standing. I don't, do we have, with this new wrinkle and new information coming, do we have a timeframe of what it's going to take to work through this?
City staff is still working on the timeframe that we gave the property owners of both properties until December 9th to either start demolition or repairs, and certainly, while this contract would be not approved till the next council meeting, that is still a deadline that staff is holding the property owners to. I believe the contract allows us to, or requires us to give a seven-day notice to proceed on the demolition, and they would need, I think, that time to mobilize and come here to do the demolition work. So, I imagine if everything went well, we could have it down in mid-December or the end of December, based on how the legislation goes through the city council.
So, again, I understand the costs and the concerns about that. We do have a tight budget, and we do have tight reserves, and we have a lot of needs in this city. We also have some responsibilities to make our city look appearable. I've heard from a number of folks, and I'm not going to say it's an overwhelming number, but a number of folks that have taken time to correspond or call, and I know they don't understand the cost ramifications, and if they did, maybe their comments would be a little bit different, but folks don't understand why we've got half of Madison Street blocked off, they have to go around barricades for 18 months, look at this eyesore, and one, you could argue, one of the four premier corners in our city. And I think we need to get on with this, and I understand that there are legal processes, but 18 months, now we've got a 40-page document on the eve of when we were supposed to be getting close to making a decision. I assume that information was available long before now, maybe it was not, but I just think we need to do our due diligence, which I think we are doing, but it's time to move on this process.
Mr. Kroll?
I was just going to add, but I think of this contract amount as a not-to-exceed, as a maximum amount. Obviously, if there's ways to reduce that amount, then staff would certainly pursue that and try to get, you know, more favorable numbers, but we needed to have a number in there so we can at least have a number that we can start working with, and that was the intent of that number, based on some estimates that we got.
And the complexity of this situation goes beyond just this room and the council and staff. It is something that has been based on court decisions and beyond just the city staff, and that council has worked with staff to allow the balance between moving this forward and allowing the property owners to work through the situation as well. And so, to your point about the property owners, whether one is ready to move or the other, they are interconnected, so it's not as simple. And I know you didn't go into all the details that we've heard over the last several months, but it is not as simple as taking one building down, since that does affect the other, and they are, the interconnected pieces is very, so it's beyond even just the two buildings, the interconnected nature of the building. So, the other piece about getting something today, and we do welcome that information, and that's the point, is having the property owners discuss options. So, despite that, we do need to move forward and cannot continue to delay without end, which is what we're doing now, but we are allowing them to work through this process with the information that they're bringing forward, and it's still on the agenda, so there is still that component of the timeline. So, another piece of this that sometimes people ask the city of why we would invest in demo instead of rebuild, and the responsibility, or where is the responsibility to rebuild, and that responsibility really is with the property owners, whether they're able to or not, and that does depend on cost, and there are a lot of factors. It's not as simple as it may look, and that we are not stopping property owners from repair. In fact, we've ordered them to either repair or demolish, so we're giving them that option of what they're able to do, because we cannot accept delay without end on the dangerous And I did hear from the executive director of Missouri Lines for Historic Preservation, Mr. Bill Hart, was not able to be here tonight, but wanted me to pass along to council that there are state tax credits in the amount of 25% and federal for 20% available. He plans to, or has, or is trying to reach out to both property owners, but like I mentioned, that is between him and the property owners, but he had asked that I share that piece as well, but that is up for the property owners to decide. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, my comments were not aimed at staff. I think they've done an amazing job of, and I think we've held them back probably some when they've recommended that we take, so I think they've done an amazing job trying to steer us through a very complicated situation. So, my comments were no way aimed at what they've been working on. It's just a frustration for, from a number of folks in town that we need to get on with it. There is a resolution of this. We need to get to it, whatever that is, and get this thing resolved.
Thank you for those comments, and we appreciate what's coming to staff to review from Mr. Nider.
And to my colleague in the fourth ward, I too am certainly wanting to move forward with this. I think I said this about seven or eight months ago. We need to do something to rid of this problem, because I think it's an eyesore to our beautiful downtown. I guess just now seeing these numbers come before us and saying that this is something that would come from the general revenue, it's just all, is all just, you know, alerting to me as relates to, you know, these numbers, and then hearing that the owner may or may not have to pay, those things are concerning to me. So, that's the reason why I asked the question about the $283,000. I've been saying, months and months and months ago, let's get rid of this. It's an eyesore, you know, and so now we're just seeing some numbers that are being put forth to us, and so I'm just asking the question, you know, where is this money going to come from? You know, so that's the reason why I asked the question, so.
And the piece that you said about may or may not have to pay, I wouldn't think that, that's not necessarily the correct, not may or may not.
May or may have to pay at all, but...
There is an obligation, I should say. There is an obligation, so I wouldn't want that to be the perception.
It's only, I think the comment goes to the historical success of recovering these types of debts. It's not 100%.
It's not 100%.
It's not 100%.
Okay.
But the state law is very favorable to municipalities on giving them options on how to collect, and if, you know, the most obvious way is to place a tax bill on the property, but also, state law says that this can be reduced down to a personal debt, which is a fairly extreme, extraordinary remedy. And so, you know, my office with supportive city staff would pursue that, you know, with all due purpose to collect as much as possible, but historically, it's hard to collect 100%, but, you know, the collections process is not a whole lot of fun, and it can take a lot of time, and, you know, sometimes you don't get everything, but...
I guess that's what I was saying, Madam Mayor, when I say may or may not, the full amount.
Sure, but there still is the obligation there.
Yeah, there's an obligation, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll look forward to the update with the information, the newly received information. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-73.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the FY 2020 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Greffrest?
Thank you. As stated, this supplemental appropriation request is for the purchase of two vehicles. Both vehicles were budgeted last fiscal year. However, they could not be delivered by the October 31st deadline due to manufacturer's deadlines, or excuse me, delays, and them being on back orders. So, normally, it's about a 14 to 16-week lead time on these vehicles, and right now, we're at about a 32-week delay. So, if you have any other question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2019-74.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri establishing election dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2020 general municipal election.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. As required under the city code, this bill would establish the election dates and candidate filing period for the 2020 municipal general election.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2019-75.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri establishing election dates in the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the 2020 general municipal election.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. As required under the city code, this bill would establish the election dates and candidate filing period for the 2020 municipal general election.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2019-76.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $35,269 agreement with County of Cole for the partnership whereby the county and city shall share an outdoor warning siren. The city agrees to pay the county 57 and 1/2% of the total cost to the county by Outdoor Warning Consulting LLC.
Chief Schrader?
Thank you. The bill authorizes an agreement between the City of Jefferson and the County of Cole to purchase and install an outdoor warning siren. In this case, it would be located adjacent to the Chamber of Commerce offices. The county would purchase and install the siren at a cost of $35,269. Following its installation, the city would reimburse the county $20,269, with the county assuming the remaining $15,000 in expense. The amount owed by the city would be paid from the police department's share of sales tax. Gee, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2019-77.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the City of Columbia, Missouri relating to emergency assistance and reviewing building and site development plans.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a memorandum of understanding, which is basically a joint aid agreement, which would allow either city to, at request of the other city, to review building and site plans on their behalf. Basically, the city doing the review would only review the basic adopted codes and not necessarily local modifications or amendments to those codes, and the final review approval would be dependent, would be the responsibility of the city from which the request came from. There is not really a calculated fiscal impact, but if we did reviews for Columbia, we would expect to receive some revenue and likewise, vice versa, if we asked them to do it. This came out of the response from the tornado. We thought we would need to use their services, and actually, we thought of a joint aid agreement with the building inspections prior to this due to an incident where we had no inspectors that were able to go out to a site for a quasi-emergency type of inspection that we did address. So, with this, the city council in Columbia did approve this late in October, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kemna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2019-79.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the times at which garage sales may not occur.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would amend the time in which garage sales may occur. The bill currently in front of the city council provides that it would change the starting time of garage sales from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. However, based on the conversation at the last meeting, we have prepared a substitute. Essentially, this substitute would place on the city administrator the ability to, sorry, I'm trying to pull up the correct document here. City administrator the ability to extend these hours on a case-by-case business, case-by-case basis upon written application. So, it would be a discretionary decision of the city coun, or sorry, I'm sorry, of the city administrator, not the city councillor, to extend the times for garage sales. It was considered doing a change based on zoning classification. However, with the procedural posture of this bill in which it was sitting on the informal calendar and looking for a substitute, that type of procedure would not be available without going through the Planning and Zoning Commission, because when you restrict on how property may be used by zone, that becomes a zoning regulation. And so, we could not present our preferred method to address this. I think the preferred method would to be not make it a discretionary thing that sits on the desk of the city administrator, but more of an objective where you could do a 6:00 a.m. garage sale in a commercial or industrial area. But we did want to give the city council the opportunity to consider an administrative discretionary approach as opposed to going through the P&amp;Z process before we got to this decision point. So, that's essentially where we're at now.
Councilman Hussey?
Mr. Mullman, thank you. Are we under any sense of urgency? I know the request has come from a specific church to do a sale or something like that, so...
Yeah, not necessarily a specific church, and there is no urgency. This was some time ago, we had a couple of requests, so...
So, I know that Councilman Hensley has some alternative language to the language provided. I guess I wonder, it seems in my mind to make...
I know the request has come from a specific church to do a sale or something like that, so...
Yeah, not, not necessarily a specific church, and there is no urgency. This was some time ago, we had a couple of requests, so...
So I, I know that Councilman Hensley has some alternative language to the language provided. I guess I wonder, it seems in my mind to make sense to maybe do it by zoning, and then so, not to make a mountain out of a molehill on a garage sale issue. But I'm also a believer of let's do it right if we're going to do it. And so I guess I would at least defer to Councilman Hensley before introducing a substitute bill to at least discuss what he had in mind as well.
Councilman Hensley.
To speak on the substitute, I am always holding on to some draft amended language that I had. One of the concerns that was voiced the last time, the first time this was brought up, was the idea of, you know, how many phone calls we would all receive pre-dawn if people were just as a matter of course allowed to open their garage sales at 6:00 AM, particularly in residential areas. So the language that I was going to present was based partly on not permitting this in any, not permitting deviation in residential areas. I'll hold off on presenting that at this point. One, one thing I would, one amendment I would move that we, that we make, the word "extend" here, I think, is confusing. I think what it actually would do is allow us to have garage sales later into the evening, but not allow us to start garage sales earlier in the morning, which I think is the purpose of the bill. So instead of "extend," I would suggest that we use "modify" to allow, to allow earlier starts. "Extend" doesn't get us where we're going. And of course, the written application should have some sort of good cause explanation provided in it, not simply, here's my form, now give me my earlier start time. So I will not actually introduce the, the language that Emily's holding on to right now, if we are going to vote on this tonight. I think the best way to do it is to make it clear that under no circumstances would, would the earlier start time be allowed in residential areas, as, as has been suggested by, by council. Thank you.
Councilman Graham.
What's the start time for garage sales now? Seven? I see a lot of signs that say it's 6:00 AM garage sales, so, but it's 7:00 AM. That's what's on the book, seven. Okay.
Councilman Hussey.
So just for clarity's sake, no sense of urgency to do this? Had an isolated incident that came up that has passed, I assume, right?
Correct.
Are you saying it's going on the informal?
Yes.
Okay. All right, got it. Speaking of, okay. Item 14, informal, we've already taken up number 68, 2019-64.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Donald R. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981 and the Clara M. Rackers Trust dated the 22nd day of January 1981, and executed by their trustee, Clara M. Rackers, for the purchase of property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Councilman Hussey.
Madam Mayor, I would ask for this to be removed from the informal calendar and taken up for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Marash.
Yes, as we previously stated, the real estate contract would allow us, the city, to move forward with the Clark and Dunklin Roundabout Sales Tax Project. I also had sent the council and mayor some background information about the project about a week or a week and a half ago. And be happy to answer any questions, but this is kind of the first step in moving towards the full interchange improvement.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. I'll just sort of share an abbreviated version of some of the comments I made last time, and, and then also comment on some of the materials Mr. Marash provided since our last meeting. I remain really concerned about acquiring property to make way for a project that hasn't been finally approved yet. I know that this particular project has a long history with this council. I know that we, in July, approved a contract for $152,000 for design purposes, or design services. But, you know, it would still cost about 10 times that much to actually install this thing, so I think we're still at a relatively early stage financially in committing ourselves to this project. Reading the engineer's letter from March, it said that the traffic analysis found that this intersection was functioning, was functioning from a traffic capacity standpoint, but that one of the turn lanes was causing confusion. That, to me, doesn't speak of an intersection requiring a $2 million fixture necessarily, or seems to require us to solve for the problem, which is a confusing turn lane out of a number of lanes of traffic that, that all meet at that intersection. It also said that the traffic volumes at the intersection are below what is typically recommended for a signalized intersection. As I've learned in the last several hours from able guidance from Mr. Marash, there's no standard for recommending a roundabout. But I've noticed that the high-volume signalized intersections that we've replaced, you know, at high-volume, signalized intersections, we have replaced and improved those conditions with roundabouts. So if a roundabout is a useful alternative to an overloaded signal intersection, and this intersection does not even have the volume to call for a signal, then I don't know that, you know, a $2 million fixture here seems like overkill to me. I was also concerned, after reviewing the appraisal report, about the amount that we're being asked to pay for the property that's the, that is actually the subject of the item that we're discussing right now. All of the comparable properties that were reviewed are west of Highway 54. They're all at least two miles away. Two of them are west of 179. They're two to nine miles away. There are no comparable properties used in this that are on the east side at all, let alone in this neighborhood. All of the comps are at least 19 years older than this, than the subject property. The first through fourth comparables are all either on or just off of major thoroughfares. Missouri Boulevard, Stadium over by Menards and Target, just off of Truman Boulevard, just, or just off of Southwest. And there were comments made in the appraisal report that, you know, so my point is, they're not, the others are not tucked in residential. You know, I agree that roundabouts generally are an excellent elegant tool, where they, you know, can do a lot of good, where they're, where they're useful. But again, the problem that we are being asked to solve at this particular intersection does not seem to be of the gravity requiring the solution that is being suggested to us. That's speaking on the whole project generally. But again, as to what's on the table right now, we haven't approved this project. And I'm not seeing a basis for this price. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Schreiber.
Points are well taken from Mr. Hensley, but we, we have had extensive discussions over a period of time, and as he alluded to, we've already spent a significant amount of money in, in the reports that Bartlet and West have given us. And I've forgotten exactly when the traffic study was done. Was that in 2014, or when was that done, Mr. Marash?
It was fi, excuse me, it was finalized this last year.
Last year. And I know there are what we call peak times, but it goes beyond just the issue of, of the commercial traffic, because we have people coming in from, off Greenberry Road, from Wardsville and other areas into the city. We have people coming in off Bald Hill Road into the city. It's been that way for a number of years. We have people that are going to Lincoln University, coming in that way, going up to IC School, East School, down to the Highway Patrol Headquarters on Elm Street, Bio Diesel, and, and several other state offices of mental health and so on and so forth that are down in that area. So when we look at the issue of, by saying that, okay, the, the study would indicate that it, it, it doesn't call for, say, a traffic light by volume, then if we don't put a roundabout there, I think that the issue is, is the most efficient way to correct an intersection that's one of the screwiest intersections in Jefferson City and has been for, for 60 years or better. I venture to say that if that intersection existed in some other areas of the city, we'd have fixed it a long time ago. And the volume of traffic is not going to be less, it's going to continue to be more. And one of the things that we've looked at is that we've, we've looked at the expansion of Lincoln University in the future and how we can best help the entire area. And that goes all the way up Clark Avenue, clear up to the, the area of Montessori School and those areas as well. So if we were to put, say, a four-way stop there or a traffic light, then all that's going to do is back the traffic up during those peak times, where it's going to be clear back to the ramps, Clark Avenue, and, and clear on up to McCarty Street and, and by IC Church and some of those areas as well. So the question is, what is the most efficient fix that we can do for an intersection that needs to be fixed? And it does need to be fixed. You know, I've talked to a lot of residents in the area. I basically lived in that area for a number of years, remember what it was like when I lived on Hobbs Terrace down there, and that was a crazy intersection back then. So, you know, yes, we might need to look into some of these things. I don't disagree with looking into the, the issue, the acquisition of the property and is there a better, a better solution there? But I certainly think that, that we've invested enough, and it's expected, that under this current sales tax, that that's one of the projects that, that we look at, that we, that we really need to do something with. So I would like to see us go forward with it, even if we do need to, to reevaluate some of the things that we've already done.
Councilman Hensley, and then Prather.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments from my, my friend, Councilman Schreiber. I just want to make one thing very, very clear. I am not pushing a four-way stop, or I guess what in that case would be like a six-way stop, or, or a signal there. Those are, don't, please don't mistake my skepticism of a roundabout in this particular location for my support of, of either of those other things. Just further exploration of, of, you know, correct measures that might make it an easier place to travel. Thanks.
Councilman Prather.
Yes, this is an approved project, joint city-county. Have you heard any objections from the county at all regarding this project?
Not, not directly objections, I guess, but, you know, there's always comments made offhand, you know, at the meetings and things. But generally speaking, they've been supportive of it when we talked to them about the traffic study. I don't want to put words in their mouth either.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. But just to be clear, the, every time this was mentioned in a sales tax proposal, it was for improvements to the intersection, right? It wasn't saying we will install a roundabout at this intersection, correct? Just ways to generally improve.
No, it's just Clark Avenue intersection.
Great, thank you.
Any other council, Grant, Councilman Graham?
So how, how could we, other than a roundabout, improve that intersection, which it definitely needs to be improved? We don't put a, a signal light there or a four-way stop sign. How else would you improve that, that intersection?
I'll preface this by saying I'm not any sort of engineer. So that covers me for mechanical up through biological, I think. Or sound engineer. A lot of the complaints I hear are, first of all, you have, the, the only issue discussed in the engineering report, or letter, is a single left turn lane that is sort of a bypass. If you are, if you're traveling east on Dunklin and you get to Clark, and you want to travel north on Clark, they have this bypass lane. And then there's a lane coming the other way if you are traveling south on Clark and you would like to travel west on Dunklin. I think I've done that accurately. And that, that, that bypass seems to be the issue. It's also not well-marked. I, I drove, I, I go through this intersection like 10 times a day. I drove through there tonight on my way to this meeting, and it was dark. The, I don't know if the lights haven't caught up with how dark, how early, how dark it gets, how early, but it was dark, it is not well lit. That, that problem is worse, in my experience, if it's been raining. You know, you just, you can't see what's going on, on the road. It is, it is wide open because all of the markings, you know, they're, they have these painted triangles where you're not supposed to drive, but you can't see those when you're appro, when you're approaching the intersection. Other places I've driven that have similar sort of odd offshoots, you have some sort of, you know, instead of having a painted triangle, maybe you have a, a raised grassy curb surrounded area. It's not a, it's not a roundabout. You're not, you're not changing the geometry of the intersection. You are not, you know, it's still no stop going north and south on Clark. It's still a stop sign going east and west on Dunklin, and we can figure out how to better mark these, these left turn lanes and, and the bypass and whatnot. But, and there are also line of sight issues because of, at least on-street parking, potentially also parking lot parking on the property that we're considering for acquisition tonight. But it, it doesn't seem to be traffic flow issues. It's a turn lane. And, you know, better lighting, better physical barriers to guide people and inform them as to where they're going. I don't know, those seem to be, you know, one layman's observations of, of things we could do that wouldn't require us to spend the equivalent of how many police cars on a single fixture. Thank you.
Councilman Prather, did you go already? You did, okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Mahalovich.
Well, back in the day, we had 30, 34 people in here testifying with regard to Chestnut. But really, six of them just said fix Clark. That was, came out loud and clear, and, and they weren't opposed to Chestnut, but they specifically said if you were to do anything to Chestnut, be sure you fix Clark, but Clark needs to be fixed anyway. Well, that in combination with the thinking of the growth of MSP, thinking of the intersections that, that MoDOT had presented for Miller and Elm and Dunklin, well, mainly on their side, which was Miller and Elm into that Clark interchange, just spoke of a need to fix what was our responsibility, not MoDOT's responsibility, and that was the Dunklin-Clark interchange. Additionally, LU at the time had considered a private-public partnership to build more housing. Well, if you can imagine, if you had student housing, where are those students going to go? So, so that, that, that was another issue that, that kind of pointed to fixing that interchange. The voters did, that hit the timing just right, that was 2015. So 2016, it was put on the ballot, 70% of the people approved it on the county side. It was near that on the city side that identified that intersection is needing improvements. And I'm going to trust the engineers and our appraisers for doing a reasonable job and, and providing us this information. And I would, I'm going to yield to their suggestions on this, this issue. But, but I think there's more than just, this is a long-term fix that we get one shot at. Now, if you had, if, if you, if you would put it out of money, I'd like to have Edgewood Creek Trail, I'd like to have money for a bridge on Ohio Street, I'd like to have, you know, I think there's a lot of needs and wants to the city, but, but this is on the east side, it was designated for that, and I think we'd upset the apple cart and, and the intent of the voters when they, when they approve that.
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you, and to, to jump on to Councilman Mahalovich's last couple of comments, I'd like to devote a fair amount of money to this intersection to solve the problem, and then devote a considerable amount of money to bringing the streets in this particular neighborhood up to par. Thank you.
Councilman Hussey.
Just one question for staff, since the, the topic at hand is really the purchase of the property. Is a purchase of property for a project like this... Is a purchase of property for a project like this, at this point in the process, outside the norm of cities' practices on past projects?
Typically, we don't have a property owner showing up saying, hey, you've taken my property out and we know you're starting the design, just go ahead and purchase it. We kind of get going with those conversations. This particular owner did ask us if they could do the contract in December. They asked, requested that. They'd accept the appraised value allegedly for their tax purposes, you know, I don't know their personal business, of course. And so we tried to accommodate them, assuming the project was moving forward as a full roundabout design, we'd be needing to acquire this property anyway.
And I guess my follow-up would be for Mr. Moulman. If we were going through the process and had to take some sort of legal action to obtain the property down the road, is there a potential cost the city incurs through that process that is saved by making this purchase at this point in time?
Yeah, I mean, so if we were to make a demand under threat of condemnation, the city, by statute, is not allowed to make a, an offer less than appraised value. So, you know, that's kind of the floor that you go in at. Not saying that we couldn't go out and get another appraisal, but, you know, you have to pay for those and so how many do you want to pay for? So once we have an appraised value in an offer based on that appraised value, you have to go through a condemnation process. And so essentially, you submit that to condemnation commissioners that are appointed by the judge and they set a property value. That could be less than the appraised value, that could be more. And so essentially, what happens is once those commissioners set the price, the city has to pay that into the court and then has the ability, if they think the price is too much, then to essentially appeal to the circuit court and ask for a jury trial. And so once you get to a jury trial, the investment of time and resources into a jury trial on a condemnation is substantial. Likely, experts would have to be hired. You know, there's, that's probably litigation that could be handled by my office, but there's pretty significant amounts of resources that has to go to that, both in cash and in time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
No.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
No.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-65.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a property lease amendment with the Joshua House Church for property addressed as 1136 East Dunklin Street.
Councilman Hussey.
Madam Mayor, I ask that this be taken off the informal and taken up for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This is companion bill, the one we just discussed. Basically, the Joshua House Church resides on that property. Been in contact with those folks and they've agreed to this lease amendment. It reduces their rent in exchange for them to maintain the property and they're well aware of when their lease ends next year this time, so they'll be in the meanwhile looking for a new location and starting their process.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Councilman Graham?
What's the rent now that they're paying?
I think it's $1,600, as I recall, and this reduced it to 100. So this gives some value to the city to lease this back to them.
So they're paying, currently paying 1,600?
1,600, I believe is the rate.
The city, the city 100?
And Ryan may be more familiar, I'm not sure, I didn't negotiate this.
Yeah, but that sounds about right. And so in consideration of that reduction in rent, the Joshua House is essentially agreeing that if any type of maintenance problems or issues come up with the building that would need to get fixed for them to continue to enjoy the lease, that they would undertake that. So essentially, it removes any risk from the city from having to put any additional money into this building for the duration of the lease. So we thought that was...
I believe they also take, will have to take care of snow removal, grass cutting, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we thought that was an appropriate exchange for the reduction of rent, is that elimination of that obligation for any type of future investment in the property.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 15, no resolutions. Item 16, presentations from the gallery. We don't have, right? There's nobody else signed up. Item 17, any council and staff discussions of presentation topics. 18, any new business. 19, we do have unfinished business. 2019-71.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 18 miscellaneous provisions and offenses related to controlled substances.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. So this was prepared in anticipation of a potential motion for reconsideration on this bill, so I would think that it is appropriate at this time to act on any motions for reconsideration on the bill before getting any details on the bill, unless the council would like otherwise.
So is there a motion for reconsideration? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I had made some comments at the last meeting and Mr. Moulman and I have had some discussions since then. I'm still not comfortable with the issue. Having said that, I realize our responsibilities as a council to implement the will of the people in this process and, yeah, I think our attorney has done a good job of trying to develop language that takes into account some of the comments I made at the last meeting. And I'm still not comfortable with the overall issue, but again, I recognize our responsibility as a city to comply. So for those reasons, I ask him to come up with the language, or he suggested he could come up with the language, which he has done in this substitute. So to allow the rest of the council the opportunity, I know we had a few folks that were missing and it's not always our habit to redo issues if folks aren't here, but I think this was important enough that I would like to ask for reconsideration, so a move for reconsideration of this issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll take up 2019-71 and then we also have a substitute.
So the substitute number two is very, very simple. So there is a change in the definition of identification card. So previously, identification card included, that definition included similar cards issued by another state. The change contained in this substitute changes that definition slightly. And what it does, it includes something called a self-executing limitation, and that is effectuated by the language at the end of the definition of identification card, which appears on the second page of the substitute. And that last sentence says, "Identification card shall also include similar cards issued by another state, but only to the extent required under state or federal law." So what this does, it self-executingly limits the city's obligation to recognize medical marijuana cards from another state, only in those situations where the city is compelled to recognize those cards. So it's not a voluntary recognition of cards from another state, but only in situations where we are required to. And this gives a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more speed to the city and law enforcement if, for example, a medical marijuana card from another state were be to, determined to not be equivalent to the Missouri medical marijuana card. We would not have to do anything, we would have authority contained in this ordinance to immediately stop recognizing those cards if, for whatever reason, state or federal law no longer requires the city to recognize those out-of-state cards for whatever reason. So this is a compromise that honors the requirement contained in state law, and I believe also in federal law, that medical marijuana cards that are equivalent be recognized, but does limit that recognition to only instances where we are required under state or federal to provide the recognition of the out-of-state card. So it's a nuanced approach, but it is substantively different.
Thank you. Councilor Moulman, is there a motion to take up the substitute? Substitute number two? So all in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 So now we're taking up the bill as substituted, or maybe we didn't need to do that, did we?
No, it was appropriate to take up the substitute. So now what we have on the floor is the bill as substituted.
As substituted, now we will take up Bill 2019-71 as substituted. Any further discussion? Questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
No.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
abstain.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 20, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Have a good evening.